Meeting called to order.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046, head sec adequate notice this meeting has been provided by advertising the Star Ledger, El No朝o Coqui, Haiti Progress, and Luz Maracana newspapers, and by distribution to the administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. Copy of the meeting notice was also forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting for Tuesday night, December 19, 2017.
Please stand for the flag salute. Roll call please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Present.
Ms. Carter.
Present.
Ms. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Present.
Ms. Garcia.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Owens.
Present.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Present.
Chair Lewis.
Present.
Former Miss President, Mr. Chair, everyone's here. Before we hear from the principal, can we please, can everyone please join me in a moment of silence acknowledging the past, the passing of a former principal of Arts High School, Ms. Lita Caldwell, who dedicated over thirty years to the Newark Public Schools, and for Imani McCray, the granddaughter of one of our community activists, community leaders, Ms. Donna Jackson, please join me. Thank you. Now we have greeting from the principal of Mount Vernon School. Let's get to Satora.
Good evening. To Board Chairperson Lewis, Board Members, Superintendent Serk, Deputy Superintendent Gregory, Assistant Superintendents, the Bulldogs of Malcolm X Shabazz High School, the Indians of Weekwake High School, Jordan Thomas, and all other honored guests, I would like to welcome you to the Mount Vernon School. Here at the Mount Vernon School, we take pride in our academic excellence and our diversity. The small gift we are presenting to the Board Members, which can be found on the dais, is representative of these ideas as it contains a book that we distributed to all of our parents during Family Literacy Night, as well as personalized homemade bookmarks from our multicultural celebration. We give them to you as a token of who we are and what we represent. Finally, at the Mount Vernon School, we encourage all of our students to be agents of change in their society and to leave this world in a better place than where they found it. And with that, I give you the Lions of Mount Vernon.
Happy Holidays to you. Happy Holidays to you. Happy Holidays, Happy Holidays, Happy Holidays to you.
Happy Holidays to you.
Let's put our hands together for our change agents once again.
Congratulations.
Thank you, David.
Next on the agenda, I want to bring in our Weekway Indian Football Team.
All right, come on.
Come on down, Indians. I think Ms. Gaddy have the resolution? Rock Commission? Okay. Can't make sure she get a mic? Let us put our hands together for Principal Andre Hollister, Head Coach Brian Logan, all the coaches there, I see Coach Foster, Coach Lee.
Malcolm X Shabazz High School's football team in the NJSIAA North Jersey Section Two and Group One Final, this was the second time in the history of the New Jersey High School State Championships where two football teams from Newark faced off for the title. Whereas the Weekwake High School Team finished the season nine-three and stormed through the playoffs, winning their semifinal game thirty-four-three over Belvedere, Belvedere High School's football team. Whereas the Weekwake High School's football team Head Coach Brian K. Logan has led the team to five state title game appearances in the last seven years, including a North Two Group One State Championship crown in 2016, and led all football coaches in the Newark with one hundred and thirteen victories. Whereas the accomplishments of the Weekwake High School Football Team have resulted in local, regional, and national recognition that serves as a positive example to their peers in the Newark Public Schools and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newark Board of Education Members do hereby commend and applaud all the Weekwake High School Football Teams, coaching staff, and players for their hard work, dedication, and accomplishments in football in the great city of Newark.
Logan. Want the captain to say something? Logan.
On behalf of the Weekway High School Football Team, I just want to say thank you to everyone involved with this honor. We greatly appreciate it, and once again, we thank you.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, please get on your feet and join us as we welcome the 2017 State Champions, the Malcolm X Shabazz Bulldogs.
In recognition and appreciation of Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team, presented on December nineteenth, 2017, whereas the Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team showed great unity, teamwork, and pride in how they carried themselves on the football field in the 2017 season. Whereas the Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team defeated Weekway High School's Football Team thirty-five to zero in the NJSIAA North Jersey Section Two Group One Final to be named New Jersey State Football Champions. Whereas the Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team finished the season with an undefeated record of twelve to zero. Won, won the annual Soul Bowl rivalry game, and dominated in the playoffs leading up to the championship. Whereas the year's state championship victory is the school's second sectional title since defeating Donnell High School's Football Team fourteen to six in 2014, and fourth appearance in five years in a sectional championship. Whereas the Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team's Head Coach Darnell Grant has over a hundred career wins, and is the first coach in Newark Public School history to win two states, two state sectional titles at the same school. Whereas the accomplishments of the Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team has resulted in the local, regional, and national recognition that serves as a positive, as a positive example to their peers in the Newark Public Schools and beyond. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Newark Board of Education Members do hereby commend and applaud all of the Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team, coaching staff, and players for their hard work, dedication, and accomplishment in football in the great city of Newark. Congratulations, guys. Excuse me, can you guys take a seat, please? Thank you. Let's give it up again for Malcolm X Shabazz High School Football Team.
Hey, thanks. Hey, thank you Newark Public Schools, thank you Board of Ed, thank you Bulldog Nation, Bulldogs Rock, baby. Y'all like that, right? Y'all like that? Who let the dogs out? You guys like this session? Board Members, oh, I'm sorry, we got one more.
One more.
We got one more. Can I have our New Jersey Rhodes Scholar? Mr. Jordan Thomas? Come on, y'all could do better than that. Our New Jersey Rhodes Scholar from University High School, Newark Public Schools Alumni, Jordan Thomas.
I would like to ask for Jordan's parents to come up as well, please. Good evening, everyone. In recognition and appreciation of Jordan David Thomas, December nineteenth, 2017, whereas Jordan David Thomas was born and raised in the city of Newark, attended Ironbound Catholic Academy during his elementary grades, and graduated from University High School of the Humanities. Whereas Jordan David Thomas has firsthand experience with the entire Newark Public School System by serving as student representative on the Newark Public Schools Advisory Board during their 2013-2014 school year, representing over forty thousand students. Whereas Jordan David Thomas will be graduating from Princeton University in June 2018 with a Bachelor of Arts in the Woodrow Wilson School of Public and International Affairs, with two minors earning certificates in Portuguese Language and Culture and African American Studies. Whereas Jordan David Thomas has been awarded a Rhodes Scholarship for Graduate Study at the University of Oxford. He is, he is among the thirty-two American recipients of this prestigious fellowship, which funds two to three years of graduate study at Oxford. At Oxford, he plans to pursue further studies in evidence-based social intervention and policy evaluation. This is the big one. Whereas Jordan David Thomas is the first, very first recipient of the Rhodes Scholarship from the Newark Public Schools and. The very first and certainly will not be the last, from the Newark Public Schools and the city of Newark, now therefore be it resolved that the Newark Board of Education Members do hereby commend and applaud Jordan David Thomas, and do hereby recognize and congratulate him for his hard work, dedication, and accomplishments as a student member of the Newark Board of Education, product of the Newark Public Schools, and citizen of the great city of Newark. Signed, Marquesa Kill Lewis, Chairperson, Tei Padilla, Vice Chairperson, Reginald Bledsoe, Dashay Carter, Crystal C. Fonseca, Kim Gaddy, Josephine C. Garcia, Floeisha Johnson, Leah Owens, and Gina Montos, Student Representative. Congratulations. So what we will ask Jordan to do next, if you will actually sign our signs here, there's a marker. So you notice we had Jordan signed three times. So one will hang in Newark Public Schools at our new headquarters at 765 Broad Street, one will hang at University High School, and one you will take home for you and your family.
I just want to thank the Board, past and present. As a former Board Member, I truly believe that I wouldn't be the man that I am today, I wouldn't even be standing here as a Rhodes Scholar if it weren't for the Board's influence. So I want to thank the Board, present for awarding me this, this huge honor, but also past for the wonderful Board Members that I served with, Mr. Lewis, you being one. It was a hectic year, to say the least, but a very impactful and influential year in my life, so thank you Board Members. I also just want to thank everybody here today, all of the support since the announcement of the Rhodes Scholarship and the winners, has absolutely been humbling, and it seems almost counterintuitive, you think, how can such a huge honor and so much support coming from all corners be a humbling experience? But for me, what I tell people is I didn't pursue a Rhodes Scholarship for the near celebrity status, I didn't pursue it for the celebration, I pursued it because I have a mission and a goal in my life, to have an impact on people's lives. I pursued it because I truly believe in my heart that this is the best way for me to ultimately have that impact, and that it will open doors for me that will. to ultimately have that impact, and that it will open doors for me that will ultimately allow me to come back, serve my city in bigger ways, larger ways. And I pursued it because ultimately, whether, you know, wherever life takes me, whether that be Mayor of Newark, whether that be-- Whether that be President of the United States. I know that now with this huge honor, and the network, and the opportunities that it will afford me, that that's suddenly a possibility. So, I'm humbled in that sense to see that I have this dream of making an impact in the future, but just to see how many people I've already impacted along the way, for me, is really just the hugest honor that I could possibly imagine. I never thought that I would have touched so many lives in so many different ways along my journey, and that is truly humbling to me. But I'm not finished yet. I truly believe that there's more work to be done, and I plan on coming back to my city, serving my city in more ways. So just thank you so much, and I will return.
I just have one question. Where's RLS Media now?
Ask history. Ask history. Ask history.
Come on, let's give a hand once again for our New Jersey Scholar, Rhodes Scholar, Jordan Thomas. Now, I would like to ask board members for a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and updates on negotiation.
Motion. Second.
Avon's second, Garcia, all in favor of going to the executive session?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Going to the executive session?
And I want to acknowledge Evelyn Williams, Board Member in the House. Thank you, Evelyn.
Executive session will be a half an hour tops.
Garcia Padia. It's motion to reconvene from executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Back in open session.
Can I get approval of minutes? Can we take it as a package? Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Gaddy, who's second?
I'm second.
On second. It's motion to take the minutes as a package, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? We're going to take them as a package. Is there a motion to vote on them? Fonseca, is her second?
Second.
Garcia. It's motion to vote on both the October 10th Business Meeting Minutes and the October 17 regular board meeting minutes. Moved by Ms. Fonseca, second by Ms. Garcia. Roll call, Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Carter. Ms. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Ms. Padia.
Yes.
I have to abstain.
Abstain on both? On both?
On the business.
Okay, on business. And Chair Lewis?
Yes.
This motion carries, the minutes are accepted.
Next order of business is our student rep report.
Good evening. As we put an end to 2017, I am starting to complete the goals that I originally planned, such as collaborating with my cabinet. I am currently working on a Google form that I will send to my cabinet members to distribute to their peers, and make the form available to those who are frequent visitors of the student center. This form will ask specific questions that students can answer from a perspective of a student at their high school. They will be able to rate each statement that I provide based on their experience. This will allow me to gather information to provide feedback about individual schools. I have also gotten in touch with Sarah Cruz from the Marion Bolden Student Center, so that I can join forces with the students there to create an end-of-the-year culminating event. This event will help me use my creativity to gather people and create an environment where NPS students, staff, and family can enjoy themselves. Over winter break, I will also finalize and add my own twist to the student representative portion of the board handbook. This will be given to the future student representative as a guideline of what the role looks like. Having this detailed guide will help the representative be confident in their role. Since the search and interview process for the next student representative will begin mid-March, I will begin to gather together any information slash advice I may need to provide for them, so that they can fulfill their role to the best of their ability. This month, there was an event that took place in Newark for NPS students. The Newark Girl Power Career Summit's purpose was to empower young women. The students that were there were able to see over 20 career options, and were given the chance to go into breakout sessions built to inspire the students to be rock star women. These workshops are useful and truly do help students to make sure their mindset is devoted to being successful. Empowerment sessions like this are both needed and wanted in order to inspire Newark's young people. I would definitely suggest more of these in the future. I hope everyone has a safe and blessed holiday. Thank you.
Any questions? Next order of business is the board chair report. Good evening Superintendent Surf, Executive Staff, Mount Vernon Elementary School Leadership Team, fellow board members, staff, parents, and community members, and students. Welcome to the last NORC Board of Education meeting of the year 2017. I'm here, I sit here today humbled and overjoyed because of what we witnessed here tonight by the performance of our students here at Mount Vernon Elementary School. Let's give them a round of applause. Mount Vernon Elementary School is one of our finest schools in this city, and it represents what Newark is really about, the diversity of our students and every culture. I would like to salute the principal here and the staff members for what they're doing to make sure that our children are being prepared to be world scholars. Please put your hands together for this administrative team here at Mount Vernon. Today I sit here with some good news. The trans-- The transition plan for the local, to local control had been approved by our state commissioner. Let's put our hands together for local control in the city of Newark. As we know, there are search, there will be a search committee. The board chair have one responsibility. My responsibility is to appoint three board members to represent the board on this transition, on this search. I sit here tonight to announce that my choice for those board members will be Ms. Leah Owens, Ms. Josephine Garcia, and Ms. Kim Gaddy. These three ladies have an awesome task ahead of them. I ask the community, and I ask our board members to throw our arms around them as they accept this major task. The major task is to set, to select, to interview, and put before this board three people who they believe is, will lead this district and move NORC Public Schools forward. I believe in our board, I believe in this district, and I believe that wherever public education going, NORC Public Schools will get there first. With that said, I would like to applaud our Malcolm X Shabazz football team, our Weekway Indian football team, and I would like to applaud all our teachers who every day strive to come to school to make our children brighter than yesterday. So I thank you all. I hope everyone have a happy holiday. And if you don't do nothing else during this holiday, please make somebody else smile. Give somebody else something to smile about. Give somebody a hug, because that may be the hug that will make their day. I encourage us, NORC, to band together. Now is not the time for division. Now is not the time for hate, but now is the time for joy and happiness and love. Love's on someone. And I promise to tell you, if nobody else have told you, I love you, and there's nothing you can do about it.
That's right. There you go.
Any questions? Next order of business is the superintendent report.
Thank you very much, and thank you, members of the community. Thank you to the incredible community here at the school. Dave Skatari, who was here before, the students performed, and congratulations to the football teams and to our resident Rhodes Scholar that, for me, is a testament to a fundamental reality that too often is underappreciated in the world out there, is this is a great city, it is a city on the rise, it is a school system that has its feet underneath it and is moving forward brightly into the future, and there are something like 55,000 young people every day who go to a public school in Newark, and more and more and more of them every day because of the work of our educators, our principals, the support of their parents and families are moving forward into an ever-brieter future. I could not possibly be happier or prouder of the work, often unrecognized, often unheralded, certainly underpaid, that so many people do to prepare the next generation of Newarkers to be the successes they deserve to be. So thank you, everybody. I have a handful of things to cover tonight, but I'm going to begin with one rather happy announcement, and that is, we, after many, many, many long years of negotiation, have signed an agreement with our principals and assistant principals union called CASA. It is an agreement that has been long in coming and one that I sincerely believe is in the best interest not only of our wonderful administrators, but also and especially of the children of Newark. It will go through a process, by the way, it will go through a process in which the membership are asked to consider it and ratify it if that meets their approval, but this is something that an enormous amount of work has gone into, and I'm extremely excited by the outcome. It is very, very important to all of us up here at the dais to make sure that the salaries we pay our educators are competitive, that we can keep our great educators, and that we recognize them for their successes with children. And I'm very pleased to be able to report that that goal is reflected in this agreement, and thank you very much. Where is Larisa? She hates this. There she is, our chief negotiator on that side. And congratulations as well to the leadership of CASA and their members. I also, picking up on the comments of the board chair, am extremely excited to report that today is a historic day in the history of the Newark Public Schools system. I'm going to try not to burden you with too much detail, because frankly, we just literally at four o'clock this evening received a document from the Commissioner of Education that is, the technical term is the transition plan, but it is literally the final step in the, in the complete return of what has been called local control here to the city of Newark. I want to, by the way, the plan, it will be, if it isn't already, up online for people to review. We are getting it to board members as quickly as we can. We understand that nobody can digest the plan that quickly, so we're going to make plenty of time for comments, for questions, and so on. But I am very, very pleased to be able to read you the following letter. I always tell people, don't read things at meetings like this, but this one is so exciting, I'm going to break my own rule. This is today, as I said, it came to me late in the afternoon. Dear Superintendent Surf, congratulations on the continued progress Newark Public Schools has made to prepare for local control. The transition to local control is governed, but then it lists the name of a statute. Pursuant to these provisions, the New Jersey Department of Education has collaborated with the district to develop a plan that will fully transition the district to local oversight by the school board. To this end, the department has developed a comprehensive transition plan, and I will be describing that in a moment, which identifies fundamental considerations of the overall transition, provides detailed guidance on two recently returned domains called Governance and Instruction Program, and includes additional guidance for the three CUSAC, Quality, Single Accountability, areas already under local control. The department has developed this plan with significant input from Newark community leaders by considering documents shared by the Newark Education Success Board, thanks to those members for their work, feedback from Newark community meetings in November, and largely accepting several components drafted by a committee of NPS staff, NPS board members, and representatives from the mayor's office as submitted. The transition will be formally effective on February 1st, 2018, that's about 40 days from now, when the local advisory board will become the Board of Education, with all the authority over and accountability for-- with all the authority over and accountability for the district this title implies. The comprehensive transition plan also includes a detailed timeline and set of milestones to guide the district's transition over a period of two years. The state moved forward in a timely manner to develop this transition plan due to the positive trends reflected in the results of Newark's most recent CUSAC reviews. These results show that there is substantial evidence that the district has the adequate programs, policies, and personnel in place to ensure that demonstrated progress is sustained. The goal of any transition plan is to ensure that with the return of responsibilities, the district is able to further build on the progress it has made in recent years. With the delivery of the attached transition plan and the presentation of this plan at the district's local public board meeting this evening, it is my belief that the district and NPS board are prepared to assume this duty. Again, I would like to extend my congratulations to the district staff, board members, and the Newark community for this milestone. As local control is returned in the coming weeks, I encourage you to make each and every decision with a focus on the best interests of Newark's children and commit to you that the New Jersey Department of Education will be here to support your efforts. Sincerely, Kimberly Harrington, Commissioner. Congratulations to all whose hard work has led to this moment. I would also like to thank certain members of our team. I know this sort of looks like a seamless process, but the amount of work and thought that has gone into this extremely complicated statutorily derived process is enormous, really beyond all description. Laboring in anonymity, sitting quietly, hoping I don't say anything, is Amanda...Amanda, please stand up. Khan, thank you very much. You hate that. Go on. Yeah, she hates it. She won't even stand up. But you have no idea...you know...you have no idea how much work that she has done on behalf of this city, this board, and of this work. There are too many others to mention and count, but I want to acknowledge and thank them all. I'm gonna...I don't know who's driving the PowerPoint. Is that you, Rob? Is that...or who? Belle! Oh, thank you, Belle. Well, you know what? I'm going to do everybody a favor and flip a few slides. All right? So let's go. I'm happy to talk about this board, but I think you all are very familiar with the process that led us here. You all had a role in the development of the transition plan for personnel. The state board voted in September to return local control, subject to the creation of and the presentation of a transition plan. Over the course of the last several months, on an extremely accelerated basis, the goal was to get this done before the holiday, this transition plan was created. It involved a committee of this board and others to give input. It involved community meetings. It involved the presentation of a document in response to specific questions that the city...that the state had asked, and the drafting of a document. It's been to the Attorney General's Office. It's been through all channels of the state. So I'd like to turn, if you would please, to page nine, Ms. Wilson. So what I aspire to do now, and again, I encourage everybody to read it. It's up online. You'll be getting hard copy as well, members of the board. I just want to give you some of the key particulars of the plan. The first is, as the letter suggested, the effective date of the full transition to local control is February 1st, 2018. The plan has a...expires naturally after two years. And by the way, the return of local control means that no longer is there a state superintendent by that title. No longer does the superintendent have the ability to veto board actions and be immediate and henceforth the decision about who to hire and whether to keep a superintendent belongs to the board and the board alone. So what a transition plan is in general is to provide particular guidance and milestones, but it is not, as I have said metaphorically, a hand from the grave directing conduct or suggesting oversight or directing policy, but it is a way to assure that the constitutional duty of providing a thorough and efficient education, which is code for a quality education the children, is discharged responsibly and by the entity to whom the state has delegated that responsibility to this district as it has to approximately 570 other districts across the state. The statute provides that there must be, within a year, a vote taken by the people of Newark. Local control will have already been conferred, but there must be a vote to determine whether the school board will be what is called, in the statutory language, a type one or a type two, which means school board members are either appointed by the board...by the mayor or are elected by the people at large. The transition plan provides that the election...that election will take place on Election Day, November 6th, 2018. The state will be appointing, and I didn't make this title up, it comes from the state statute book, an individual called a highly skilled professional. I want to make very clear that that individual does not have line authority, but exists simply to help mediate any disagreements, to support the board, to support the district, and to make sure that everything goes as expected and as planned. That will be a state appointment. In addition, the transition plan creates what is called a comprehensive accountability office, and that is simply an independent entity. It may be housed at a university like Rutgers. This has not yet been clarified, that whose only responsibility is to issue to the public and to the board and to the state a periodic update as to whether the provisions of the transition plan have been satisfied. It's not a qualitative review. It is not a, you know, open door evaluation of anything it wants. There's some certain specific things. For example, the plan will provide, and we'll get to this in a moment, that there shall be a national search to find a permanent superintendent and that that permanent superintendent shall have been selected in time for the beginning of the next school year, actually, by July...by July 1st. So what this accountability office would do is simply report yes or no. Was that expectation set out in the plan fully satisfied? The...a subject that has come up a lot in various meetings is what happens if the terms of the transition plan are not met or if other things unexpectedly go awry. This was something that I will tell you that I weighed in on. I think it's very important that there not be any ambiguity about who's in charge. And at the other...at the same time, the state wanted to make sure that there be certain sort of guardrails, that there not be things that really lead to a renewal of some of the issues that led to state intervention years ago. And with a little bit of back and forth, they've arrived at a solution that I think everybody should be very comfortable with and pleased with, and that is, it...the plan sets out a handful of things that are so egregious that it would require some action by the state. For example, a pattern of unethical conduct, for example, passing a budget that would bankrupt the district, things sort of of that level of egregiousness. It then provides that even those things do not constitute an automatic trigger for the return of state intervention. They simply would authorize the state to try to work with the board, to try to correct that, and ultimately to direct, for example, passing a budget that did not put the district in solvency. Other than that, there is no other oversight other than that which is provided to every single district in the city...in the state, all 570 or so, through the CUSAC process. There's a series of scheduled interventions. It's a fair amount of process, judicial involvement, and so on. So I think this is a...frankly, the state, I think, gave a lot on this point, and frankly, it's doing that out of trust for and belief in the capacity of this board to successfully discharge their primary, indeed exclusive duty, which is to make every single decision first, foremost, and exclusively on the basis of the best interests of the students in the city. The...if I can go to...oh, you did. Thank you very much. I'm going to whip through these very quickly, but obviously, there is an expectation, and the board has already done most of this, that there be a professional development and training to make sure that everybody has all the knowledge they need to be equipped to be a successful board member. Again, a lot of that has already taken place. I'm going to go down to the bottom of the page. The plan specifically addresses the process for finding my replacement, and here's what the plan says. The contract...my contract runs to, I believe, July 1st of 2018. That's when...that's when it expires. But the plan specifically provides that in the event I choose to retire from the field of battle, resign, move on, however you want to put it, in advance of the terminal date of my contract, there's a provision for an interim superintendent to take place. And the particulars of that would be that the board would have an opportunity to weigh in on that...on that decision, but otherwise, it would default to...by order of seniority. There shall be a process to commence a national search. What does that mean? Meaning that when, you know, this is a...this is a city now that I believe, and I'm not sure, I could have said this a handful of years ago, will attract some very interesting and highly qualified candidates who may be from anywhere around the country, who may be serving in this role elsewhere or not. I think there is a bias, perhaps, in favor of finding great talent from within, but there must be a search in order to identify...in order to identify a range of candidates. The transition plan sets up a process, and the chairman mentioned this on the way, wherein a selection committee is created. The terms of that, and by the way, this was something that people weighed in on, will there would be three members of this board who were just announced as Leah Owens, Kim Gaddy, and Josephine...Josie Garcia. The three individuals who were jointly chosen by the state and the mayor, and I'm pleased to be able to announce that they are Nancy Cantor, who is the chancellor of Rutgers Newark, Irene Cooper Bosch, who is the CEO or president or executive director of the Victoria Foundation, and Dr. Marion Bolden, who all of you know previously served in this chair. In addition, the state has one appointee in addition to those six, bringing that number to seven. That I have urged the state to choose somebody from Newark and somebody who is an educator, and meaning, I think, you know, we've got a lot of like fancy people here, but let's have someone who's actually walked the walk and talked the talk and been in a classroom. I have just been advised that they have selected former principal of McKinley and current assistant superintendent Carolyn Granado to be that. She may not know that yet, but there she is. To be the seventh person...she's sitting right behind the balloon. She's the seventh person on the selection...on the selection committee. That committee is charged with hiring a...with...working with the search firm to evaluate candidates and to submit no more than three of those to the board for its ultimate and final and determinative...determinative decision. The dates are urgently important here, and the transition plan asks that that process be completed no later than May 31st, 2018. It certainly could be completed more quickly than that, but it's very important that there's somebody in place well in advance of the new school season, the new school year that begins the following...the following September. I'm going to skip, if you could, to page 11, and I think that there's really nothing...well, let me mention this. The...the...under the heading strategic...I don't know if you can read this, folks, but under the heading Strategic Planning Expectations, the...we, as you know, in close collaboration with the community, with the board, and others, developed collaboratively a strategic plan. The expectation set out in the transition plan is...by the way, that was a plan of three years' duration, and the expectation is that that plan run through, I guess, next year, is the third and final year of the plan. And then during the first year of the new superintendent's tenure, there be exactly the same process involving the community, involving the board to develop or update or revise the strategic plan going forward. There are other technical details associated with this. There's a...there's an entity created by statute called the Capital Projects Control Board, which allows for the reality that a state...a district subject to state intervention has a different process and procedure for raising debt that is issuing bonds and so on. So that will be discontinued, and it will be like every other district in terms of how that process works. And I think I will just move on to instruction and program. The points I want to highlight here, and forgive the sort of somewhat arcane reminder, but there is one of the CUSAC indicators called Instruction and Program was the subject of an application for what is called an equivalency waiver. That's a mouthful that basically says that when the state conducts a annual or in the end triennial, every three-year review of our academic progress, it...we have asked for and received the ability to have those...that evaluation take place on the basis of certain clearly identified, very metric, if you will, progress indicators, graduation rate going up, the percentage of students who are reading on grade level, the progress that students are making relative to other students with similar starting points all across the state, and so on. And so the plan says that that is the criterion under which the state will continue to review the district. Remember, that's not unique to Newark. Every district is reviewed under the CUSAC process unless or until the district applies for either an end of the waiver or for...to be sort of put under the new accountability regulations that the state has recently...has recently issued. That's really the...that's under the first bullet there, and that's the one I just want to want to highlight on this. Turning to page...this one, there are obviously other areas that have already been returned to local control. It basically echoes the existing status quo on that. It doesn't really add anything of any particular significance to that, that those areas are fiscal management and operations. That's actually three, fiscal management, operations, and personnel. So there's nothing particularly germane to add to that. So I'm going to actually ask the board's guidance on something in terms of how you would like to proceed. My superintendent report, at the request of the board, has updates on two specific additional substantive areas aside from the transition plan. One is an update on enrollment, and the other is a very interesting report on educator attendance, teacher attendance, that has been the subject of a great deal of work, and so on. We are prepared tonight to spend a few minutes going through those two issues with you, but in light of the momentousness of this occasion, I want to ask whether you would prefer that we defer that until January or whether you would prefer that we proceed with the report as scheduled. I am at...I am your humble servant. I am, I am your humble servant.
We, we've been waiting for these numbers, so I think we need to go on with the room.
Okay, happy to do it. Happy to do it. So if you could, I'm going to just pass through these, Ms. Wilson, to, to this. So this is a, as you know, the number of students that are educated in Newark is something that we appropriately keep a great deal, a very close attention to, and you all have asked for the sort of enrollment trends over the last several years, and they're really quite interesting. I don't know how much of this is readable, so if you'll indulge me, let me just point out that the, oh, thank you. The yellow line at the top, it reflects Newark citywide enrollment, and by the way, these are not including pre-K children, as the note at the bottom says. In addition to these numbers, there are nearly 7,000 children publicly funded with about $100 million of state resources to attend pre-K programs for three-year-olds and four-year-olds, which are universally available in Newark, either directly through the Newark Public Schools or as regulated by the Newark Public Schools, but as operated by private providers like the Ironbound Coalition, et cetera. So you'll see that Newark enrollment has been steady and has slightly up in 2017. That's that 50,000 number at the top. It's very interesting that during this period, the, the enrollment of Newark Public Schools in the sense of traditional public schools has remained constant and indeed is ever so marginally, ever so marginally up during this period. So for the last several years, while we have seen some growth, which we've talked about in the context of our per pupil funding going down, as our funding remains relatively flat and our enrollment going up, we'll see that the population of Newark Public Schools itself has essentially been flat while the total population of public school students has gone up. If you will turn to the next page, please, and this was specially prepared for a board member who was unable to be with us for this part of the meeting, let me try to explain this, this page. Every, every bar, can you see the bars on the left-hand side of the graph, the vertical yellow bar, that some of them have a little tip of blue on the top or the bottom? When we divide up the pie, if you will, every year and allocate money to the principals and faculties of every school, obviously it is based on a projection about how many students will be attending that school. It's a very complicated process involving demographics, involving historical trends, involving lots of different factors. And once that budget is assigned, it's essentially fixed for the year, regardless of whether we got that right or not. Now, it is true, actually, we do some truing up. If there's a big influx of children into a particular school, we'll make some accommodation for that, but for the most part, the budget as allocated reflects the, the projection for the enrollment. What this shows is if you see a blue line, a little blue line at the bottom, or a little blue line at the top, that is the delta, the difference between what we projected and what, and who actually enrolled in the school. And the very, I think, optimistic news here is you can see that our projection process has proven to be remarkably accurate. You'll see at a handful of schools, and I'll just read the words for you, Eastside, Ann Street, Lafayette, Wilson, projections were either very close or enrollment was slightly lower than projected. That's those. And then you'll see some on the top side, schools, by the way, the schools that have the biggest difference are very, very small schools, because this is reflected in, I believe, percentage terms. So this is just a sense that obviously people are very and appropriately focused on equitable distribution of assets, putting you sort of under the hood a little bit about how that money is allocated, and to show you that the enrollment, and by the way, very relevant again to people who understandably focus on class size, you really want to get it right in the budgeting process, which Mr. Hagerty and others lead in the course, and Mr. Gregory lead in the course of the fall, as well as our wonderful assistant superintendents. If I can flip to the next page, please. Newark students attend a diverse array of high schools. I find this incredibly, incredibly interesting, and by the way, is, I've been sort of in and around public education in various administrative roles for a long time now, and I've never seen a city that could, that would, that has this kind of distribution of high school students. So let me just sort of explain the graph. The number that says 21% up there, Ms. Wilson, those are high school students who attend a charter school. The number that says 10% are New Yorkers who attend one of the county voc tech schools. The number that says 45% are, I'm sorry, the limits go to the number that says 24% are traditional public schools, non-charters, not county voc ed schools that you may know of as magnet schools, and you can list them all, arts, science, university, American history, Bard, technology, and who have I left out? I've left somebody out. I left someone out. But anyway, the, that's the risk. And then 45% of our high school students, 45% of our schools go to what is generally in the vernacular called comprehensive high schools, and that's Eastside, Westside, Central, Alchemax, Shabazz, and Week Wake. So very, very few cities I'm aware of have this large a percentage of students in magnet schools. For those of you who, every once in a while, cast your eyes across the Hudson River, you've heard of Bronx Science or Stuyvesant High School, or, and there are a handful of others, but to send 24% of our students to magnet schools is a unique feature of the landscape here. And these schools, by the way, are overwhelmingly doing very, very well, and it's interesting to note that the magnet school has, the magnet school enrollment has increased very dramatically in percentage terms since 2011, from about 2,800 to about 3,500. So these schools, which are very successful, we have other successful schools as well, are attracting, these schools are also very oversubscribed. It's the source of a lot of, I would say, either disappointment or in some cases controversy because there are roughly two, and in many cases, three times as many applicants for some of these seats as there are actual openings in those, and it's all done through the sort of neutral, neutral assignment process. If I could ask you to, thank you, Ms. Wilson, you're way ahead of me. So while overall enrollment is stable, the demographics of Newark students has shifted somewhat over the past eight years. The blue graph represents our African-American students. The yellow or green, I guess, represents our Hispanic students. You'll see in a very modest way, there are slightly more Hispanic students now serve by the Newark Public Schools than African-American students, so it's basically, basically equivalent. And you'll see that the white student body has, you know, also gone up slightly, but is relatively flat in comparison to the, to the other trend lines. So that's a quick update on enrollment. For anybody who has the appetite for an incredible amount of additional information about that, we are sharing that through the program and instruction committee and would be delighted to share it further with any and all board members. I would now like to ask Ms. Schrambach to update us on teacher attendance. We've talked about student attendance and chronic absenteeism as a very deep problem in this district, trends, causes, potential solutions. So we're flipping the magnifying glass a little bit to talk about attendance of our educators. Larissa.
Thank you Superintendent Surf, and good evening, everyone. I, as the superintendent mentioned, we know we've been talking a lot about student attendance and improving our student attendance over the past several years. We've also started to take a look more specifically at data around our teacher attendance. I want to set the stage a little bit before I share our specific data to sort of frame why we're looking at this in general. We know that there's been studies that show that when teachers do not come to work, our students actually do not perform as well. But there's also an impact on staff morale, as many of our teachers are the good actors, are those that come to school every day in service of our students, and those teachers can be impacted when other teachers have attendance issues. So this is certainly not a story of every teacher in Newark, but it is a story of teacher attendance that we need to share. The last piece is that it does also have a financial impact. We spend $8.5 million a year on substitute teachers in the district. That is about double what other districts our size have spent in years past when you look at a national study. So it's definitely something that has both an instructional impact, a financial impact, and a morale impact. So we wanted to take a look to understand what does our teacher attendance look like. But before we did that, we looked at what other studies have said about teacher attendance in the, in the nation. So Ms. Wilson, thank you. There's been a couple of studies that have come out over the past few years that have looked at urban districts across the country. The National Council for Teacher Quality published a study in 2014 that looked at over 40 districts across the country to understand what a teacher attendance looks like. They found that on average, teachers missed about 11 days per year across all of the districts, and that helps us to understand what it looks like in other districts before we turn to ours. It also showed that 16% of teachers were absent for 18 or more days a year, which is what they define as chronically absent. If you go to the next slide, Ms. Wilson? This just shows a graph from one of those studies that has the 40 districts to say, this is, these are districts that have good attendance, that is, teachers who are absent three days or fewer per year. I helped us by just putting an arrow where Newark falls specifically on those district comparisons. You'll see that we do not fare well compared to other districts that are looked at in the study of urban districts. So that made us wonder, what does our data really tell us when we, when we dive in specifically for a full year of data? So we looked at 1617 to understand after a full year of data is examined, what are the trends? And we see that overall, our teachers missed over 56,000 days last year, which actually translates to an average of 16.8 days that a teacher is absent, and that's including our FMLA, which is our medical leave. Again, 16.8 is compared to the national number of approximately 11. So we're almost six days higher on average than the national study indicated. When you take out FMLA, because I think it is important to understand what it looks like with medical leave and without medical leave, when you take out FMLA, if you click it one more time, Ms. Wilson, you'll see a graph shows up, I hope. There it is. You'll see that this is how we break down the number of days that teachers miss on average. So you'll see that 17% of our teachers miss six days or fewer per year, and 35% of our teachers miss seven to 12 days per year. That leaves about half of our teachers, or 48%, that miss 13 days or more per year, and that's when you remove any approved medical leave from those absences. And so that's really what we're looking at when we say 21% have missed 20 or more days. That's again, much higher than the national study average of our chronically absent teachers. So then we want to look at what is the driver of those numbers? And you'll see that typically there is a narrative that it is FMLA that is driving our absences in our district, that our medical leave issue is the one that really is driving all of our absences. And we see from this graph that it's actually not. It's about 11% of our absences are driven by FMLA. The vast majority are driven by our sick and personal days that are available to our staff to take under our, our contract. They are contracted to, at this point, have 17 days per year that is available to them. We also look, if you'll go to the next slide, at our month-by-month trends to see if there's certain months that have better attendance than others. We are not surprised to see that we have sort of lower attendance in later months as the school year progresses, but frankly, besides September, there's not really a month in which you see a tremendously high number on average of our teacher attendance. But before I conclude the presentation, I do want to emphasize that there are a lot of teachers that come every day and work tirelessly for our kids, and that there are a lot of schools within our district that actually do very well with this. So if you'll go to our next slide, I do want to celebrate our specific schools that had the highest attendance last year, when you look at the percentage of staff with fewer than 13 absences. We have Technology High School, Eagle Academy, Rafael Hernandez, Chancellor Avenue, and First Avenue. And those are not small schools, those are large schools where there's clearly an emphasis on high expectations for teacher attendance. There's others who fall right below the cut point, but we had to pick just the top five, so that's who gets in our, in our top five. So I definitely want to emphasize that there are schools that we can learn from within our district as to what our administrators are doing to improve teacher attendance. So with my last slide, I just, of data, I want to show you, that was from last year. We are now instituting a month-by-month review, just like our student attendance is reviewed month by month. We are now reviewing our teacher attendance month by month with our principals, our assistant superintendents, and district leaders. You will see that we had 93.7% average daily attendance for teachers in September. That has declined each month since then, with an average daily attendance of 89.8 in November. I think the important piece here is recognizing that a lot of our days in November, the teacher attendance was lower than our average daily attendance for students. So 11 out of the 18 workdays showed teachers coming to work at a lower rate than students. So this is something that I think that we know that we have to address in a different manner than just reporting data. Data is really only the first step. So with my last slide, I just want to outline sort of where we're headed next. I have a sample of the, the reports that are going to schools each month. That includes a teacher-by-teacher breakdown for our administrators so that they can better track this information. I think putting that back out to the schools is an important first step. Then we are going to be reaching out to our administrators who have stronger attendance to see what are the effective strategies they're using. We're also going to be engaging with reviewing our current attendance discipline policies to understand how we might change those to better incentivize attendance. So we are just starting the process for working on the next step now that we have the picture of data. We wanted to share that picture with you all first before we start on, on phase two, which is really implementing strategies to improve attendance.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Back to you.
Any questions from board members? No? Okay. Next order of business, public participation?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. As a reminder, time limits for all speakers are enforced. There's no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. Speakers will be required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting is limited to one hour and 30 minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that are not be permitted include, we're not limited to, naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to hijack the, the meeting or incite others to do so. Public participation at board meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public the opportunity to address the board, the administration, on issues of public concern. That is a forum for two-way dialogue with board members or district officials. The superintendent or designee or the chair may respond to questions either at the end of the session or responses may be provided at later time. Superintendent, designee, or chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any speaking privilege if the comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the board chair or district officials, repetitive and truculent speech or other disregard of the rules decorum will not be tolerated and may subject the individual to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the meeting may be adjourned.
Not appearing. Next speaker, Darren Martin.
So good evening all, Darren Martin, 107 Ivy Street, Newark. So all students and parents want for Christmas is to finally get rid of Chris Surf and David Hesby. So these two are directly responsible for many of the poor decisions and horrific policies and programs that negatively impact Newark students and their families. Surf, you tried your best to hide the fact that Hesby was working with NPS. After lying about it several times, Surf's aides, not him himself, he didn't have enough heart to do it himself, I guess, came out and said that Hesby, admitted that Hesby is employed by a firm that NPS is working with. So interesting trend. Surf doesn't like to tell the truth. Kami didn't tell the truth. I mean, it's just a trend going on here. Can Newark get some transparency, some truth, some honesty for Christmas? So Hesby runs a counseling firm. So Hesby runs a counseling firm, a consulting firm, I'm sorry, called Effective Educational Solutions LLC. Imagine Hesby being effective at anything except for making money. And he is also connected to two politically connected law firms. So Hesby, like Surf, ducked repeated calls and emails seeking information or comment about his new job. My question to the board is why are we still working with Hesby? He was spineless when he was in Trenton. He didn't do anything. And that reminds me, Mr. Surf. Although you claim to be happy about local control coming back, you had an opportunity some years ago to give local control back to Newark. We didn't forget that. So I know you want to conveniently forget that, but I didn't forget it. Now, my last message is to the women up there on the stage. And this is not a popular decision, but I know most people are afraid to talk about it. But a couple of weeks ago, there were some allegations, and I'll underline it, allegations made at 920 Broad Street by a councilwoman about some things going on at 920 Broad Street. My question to the women up there, if you are an elected official, I'm going to deal with the men. I have a separate way I'm going to deal with the men, because women are usually more active than men in this community. I don't know why. But if you call yourself an elected official and you have not called for an investigation into the allegations of what's going on at 920 Broad Street, I can't really call you a leader. Again, it's allegations, so you got to, it can't be party over principle. Again, I'm going to deal with the men. So what I did today is I called Bill Jacob's office to ask, was she going to ask for an investigation? I also called the Freeholder Board President. I'm going to wait for a call back, and then I'm going to go see them, because I think that something needs to happen. Again, allegations. So you should at least call for an investigation. And if you're sitting on this stage and you've been elected by the people, for the people, to conduct the people's business, and you call yourself a leader, I think you need to speak out about what's going on at 920 Broad Street. Again, you're not accusing anybody, but you should at least have the heart to call for an investigation.
Next speaker, Chris Cannick.
My name is Chris Cannick. I work at Central-
Ms. Cole, please. Thank you. You're talking out. Thank you. Ms. Cole? We have someone speaking. Thank you. Mr. Cannick, you go.
Okay. My name is Chris Cannick. I work at Central High School in Newark, New Jersey, of course. Recently, I moved out of Newark, so I am now living in Central Jersey, in Lambertville, New Jersey. I wanted to first start by saying that I'm very pleased with most of the picks for the transition team, or I should say, the superintendent's election team. No name stood out immediately as somebody that I would have to get up here and start yelling about. So that's a pleasant surprise. Additionally, all right, I wanted to remind the board that the Black Lives Matter Week of Action starts February 5th and runs through February 11th of 2018. I'm hoping that you will endorse that event, perhaps through a resolution at an upcoming board meeting, so that all teachers know that that, for example, their use of the Amistad curriculum and various other materials. For example, the NTU is putting together educational materials for the upcoming event. We want to make sure teachers know that it's okay to present those things, even though they can become uncomfortable for some people, and that we need to continue these conversations at a district level. So once again, I'm calling on you. We need to have a resolution in support of that week so that teachers know that they are in the right by implementing the Black Lives Matter Week of Action. With all of that out of the way and said, and I don't want to diminish it, those are all very important things, I also want to take a moment and reply to something that happened at the last board meeting. Last board meeting, I literally pulled up on my cellphone, because I was ill-prepared, the data for Central High School and North Star Academy. And I presented that data verbatim. I read the data off of the report created for the state for Central High School and North Star Academy. I then had at least one individual who accused me of using rhetoric and perhaps not quite telling the truth. And so I wanted to make it very clear where those materials can be found. If you go to the state website, the Department of Education, you can actually pull up the reports for every school in the city, as well as throughout the state. And get those same figures, the exact ones you'll find quoted on YouTube or in private recordings of the previous meeting, are available online to anyone. So next time, if certain Republican politicians want to meet me out in the lobby and try and run me out of town, call me an outsider, well, I'll acknowledge it. I am now officially an outsider. I can't afford to live in North Newark. So with that in mind, I urge everybody, stay with the truth, and let's make sure it sets us free. All right, take care.
Next speaker, Brandon Rippey. Not appearing. Next speaker, Venice Roper. Not appearing. Next speaker, Lucius Jones. Not appearing.
Denise Cole, 2 Care Avenue in Newark. I wanted to come before the board today to speak about some of the issues that have been happening at some of the sporting events I got a phone call about, and that this board haven't taken action to correctly address the fighting, the fact that weakway girls threw dog food and Shabazz girls cheerleaders face. How it was handled was a conference call, and there were no consequences to the bad actions, and even the coaches addressed. There were fights with Arts High School and some students at an event, and they said they was throwing down. Security couldn't even break them up. This was spoke about before, and it needs to be addressed and looked at. Second of all, I came here before the board because this is a question from Nancy Derrin. Please make sure the board chair, Tave Padella, I meant the board vice president, Tave Padella, and the chair answer. In June, they voted on the CEAC contract. When you vote on a contract, that contract has to be signed and adjudicated, and you have to know what's in it. Ever since the board meeting that they voted on the contract, I've been operating the document, and I've been denied the document because the document has not been signed and officially adjudicated. So how did this board vote on something that was not officially wrote up, signed, and done? How do you do that? So they're lying to us. They're being dishonest. And I've operated it as of this month and was denied because that contract still hasn't been signed and adjudicated. So we don't know what space they have, what they're using, or are they trying to take over George Washington Carver? So I need a question. Why did you vote on a contract that I can't get because it's not signed and adjudicated yet? I've operated it every month. I need an answer. Also, we have programs, inclusive programs going on in the different schools in this city, and the community have not been kept updated on it. It's inclusive programs, but I just learned tonight, they're only training staff, they haven't actually implemented it to the students yet in the school. But even with that being said and presented at the CPAC meeting, we need to dive deeper. They need to come up and hold a presentation or a conference for parents to come out and know what you're contracting. These are contracts that they're paying millions of dollars for to train our teachers and only train in a select few. I'm military. I train. I'm a captain. You don't train a select few if you pay a million dollars for a contract. You train the entire teaching staff, or you don't train at all. That's the only way our children are going to get the services in all five wards. Second of all, parents, we need you to step up and ask this man, when he pit us against one another, that that little presentation about teacher absence and students, that was only to pit us against our teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
You know why our teachers are absent? Because Mr. Surf is in charge.
Your time is up, Ms. Cole.
He's supposed to motivate our teaching staff. And if he doesn't motivate our teachers, they won't be-
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Your time is up. Next speaker, Helen Watson.
What in sinners are he putting together? And Mr. Marquise Lewis, I don't mind you cutting me off, but you can give me extra time to finish saying what I'm saying. You're disrespectful, and I'm going to point it out. Don't ever elect him to another position, because we in this state, because he don't know what he doing.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night. Helen Watson.
I'm here. Good evening, everyone. God bless everyone. I'm here on behalf of Newark Evening Educational Center located in Newark on Newton Street. I am the student council vice president. We come to say thank you to the Newark Board of Education, to the board members for giving us a budget, for keeping the door open so that we can further our education. We just wanted to say thank you. Last year, we came in and, you know, we was humble, but we asked for some things, and you reached out, you heard us, and you granted us those things. We didn't want to come on a negative note. We wanted to come on a positive note, just to let you know that we appreciate you and we're grateful. So I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Watson. Ms. Sheila Davis.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sheila Davis, and I'm a representative of the Evening Night School at Newton Street. And I just want to say to everybody up on stage that you have done a wonderful thing for us, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And it just makes us want to just continue on to succeed in what we trying to do. So we just thank you. Thank you for everything. And we will continue to work as hard as we can. And we hope that you have a wonderful holiday, you and yours.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next speaker, Azatar Abu Hatta.
Good evening, everyone. Good job, Mr. Lewis. That was lovely. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you do. This is a very hard job, and the fact that you devote your days and your time to serve our children in the city of Newark is something priceless, and we can never pay you for. So tonight, I'm here to ask you about three things. The first thing that I'm asking you about is, as parents, we need to be more proactive about helping our children in their schoolwork. So I'm asking because today, all of us were becoming more and more savvy when it comes to technology. And I'm asking if we could, in every school, help parents help their children and reinforce the learning experience at the school by putting the lesson or putting a virtual lesson online that parents, especially in the elementary, can help their kids with. So this is one request. The other thing is, I wanted to ask that I get college students that are the product of Newark public schools, and a lot of time, I hear about the insensitivity that sometimes in some schools takes place in regards to how the teachers and the students interact. So I'm asking the board to make sure that there is training for the teachers, training in diversity, and training in sensitivity that would prevent teachers from telling a student that I will get paid regardless of you like me or if you don't. We should never tell a student, a student that cannot vote, don't have a driver's license, and cannot donate blood, that hostility. We should never approach them with that feeling. We are always here to serve them. The third thing I want to say, and this is a thank you note from my college, SS County College, for continuing the bridge and the bond and strengthening the bond between us and the district schools. I just want to say that I hope that we can make more connections, because the college has a lot of programs and disciplines that are in high demands, such as cybersecurity, network technology, nursing, physical therapy, that can provide our graduates in high school with immediate access to the workforce. Again, I want to thank you for all your hard work, and I want to wish you a safe and a wonderful holiday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ramon Menendez. Not speaking. Next speaker, Patricia New. Next speaker, add to the speakers list, Deborah Smith Gregory.
I knew there was something wrong with this list when I didn't see her name.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Smith Gregory. I serve as the president of the Newark Branch NAACP. Thank you, chairman, for placing my name. I did sign up to speak, but thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I wanted to just briefly touch on a couple of things in the superintendent's report for the enrollment. I would ask the board if there is the numbers about how many general ed in the count, how many special ed, and how many ELL students were counted in the October 15th enrollment? And also, is there a plan in place? I guess this would be coming out of program and instruction to the senior staff members. But the high school students, are they being educated about what local control means for their education? I think that it's important that they understand. A lot of us are still in the question about what local control is, but I think that the high school students- high school students can handle learning more about what that will mean for them. Also, there is a lot of history for the Newark Public Schools. I know that the superintendent spoke about building on the progress in recent years, but we do have a great history and there is an organization called the Newark Public Schools Historical Preservation. I would ask that the board have that particular website linked to your website. It is NPSHPC.org. They are asking for alumni to donate old trophies and books and yearbooks because in the moving from Two Seater to Broad Street, I'm pretty sure some things have gotten lost. And this way, it will allow us to celebrate the history of the Newark Public Schools. We have a long, proud history. Also, board members, I would ask that when you're given contracts, that you do the research and you question, for example, I think it's Mr. Padilla who is head of facilities, the Malcolm X Shabazz roof, there was, last month, there was a resolution about fixing the roof again. That roof has been fixed easily about five times. So when those contracts come before you, I would just ask that you do the research and question as it relates to the contracts. Thank you. Have a great holiday season and congratulations as we progress towards local control.
That's the end of public participation. Any board members have comments?
I do.
Ms. Gaddy.
So I just want to, is this on? Just some of the, want to respond to some of the speakers. And in terms of the questions regarding facilities, want to make sure we put that on the agenda for operations. In terms of Essex County College and the workforce, I think that was an excellent idea. And I want to make sure that in terms of the program and instruction committee, as we prepare for next year and our students getting ready for college, maybe we can see what those connections are, what kind of assistance we need for those students. And I just wanted to also speak, one of the parents spoke to me about the scholarships for our students. So I want to make sure that hopefully for program and instruction, maybe we can add something as it relates to guidance counselors and making sure that our students are receiving information about scholarships. Two parents stopped me earlier today. Lastly, in terms of the high school students being educated about what local control means, I mentioned that to our student rep and I hope that she will potentially consider that. I think that's an excellent idea for our student rep. If that is something you feel comfortable with, it should come from students, for students, and whatever support you need, I just want to let you know we will be here for you. Thank you.
All right. Now we're gonna go into our voting session.
Finance and operations.
Finance, I would kind of get a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Board chair. Go ahead, take the vote. Take the vote, I haven't added item.
All right, so this is a motion to take. This is an item. The added item was gonna be included. Madam SBA. Go ahead and explain.
Can I get an opportunity? Can we get to that added item, please? It should be. The added item, the district this morning conducted a reverse auction for energy and And it will be over two-year, I'm sorry, not energy, electricity and gas. It'll be over a two-year period. This is a brand-new item we're adding. The auction occurred this morning. Pricing and rates for the auction is good for, I think, a 24-hour period. We have discussed this in the recent months with the operations committee. Because the item was not added to the agenda in time, it was not discussed at the finance committee. So I will offer my apologies to finance chair Fonseca and others. If you note that the auction was held this morning, we can see that the winner for our power and gas will be East Coast Power at an estimated cost of $235,712.21. We anticipate a savings of $106,589.2 over our current two-year cost. We also see that Constellation Energy at an estimated cost of $4,056,434.27 will provide us a savings of almost $898,000. These two items will be for a two-year period. It has allowed us the opportunity to reduce our costs for buying electricity and for buying natural gas. So we'll have a total of almost a million plus in savings. This particular item is an added starter. It will be signed, but if we do not vote on it this evening, the auction becomes null and void and we'll have to perform another auction in January and we may lose the rates that we currently have. Are there any questions on this item? One other, you can't, sorry. Any other, one other piece, the contract services will be paid for via our savings. And there is a 1% Mr. Eggu. Mr. Eggu, is it 1 or 1.5 commission? Okay. So the supplier of both the gas and the electric will pay the commission cost for the vendor. Any questions?
So that is my question. You know, I know that any savings to this district is appreciated, especially when we look at getting off the grid and using some of that energy that we store up in electricity. So my concern was just the cost. Because typically, when you have these kind of agreements, the money is taken out of the amount of savings. So I just want to be clear that Mr. Eggu said that the commission is now coming out of the supplier portion and not the money that we will be saving. Is that what you said?
I'm trying to get his attention. Because I'm waving.
And now you're saying it's 10%. Several months ago at our operations committee, I thought it was like 1.5 to 2%. Mr., so can you just clarify that?
It will be 0.001% every month. So over two years, it will come out to about 10% paid by the supplier.
Okay. And then my second question, Constellation Energy, that was definitely added. That did not come up, well, I know I wasn't here for this month's committee meeting, but is that somebody that we just added? Because I don't remember.
Remember, this is an auction. So you open the auction and vendors bid. We didn't know who was gonna bid and we didn't necessarily know what their pricing would be. So whoever's interested provides a bid. They get an opportunity or a time period in which to bid again. So while you may have heard of Constellation as a vendor, it was not because it was a vendor selected by the district, it is a vendor that expressed the interest and won the bid.
Right. And I understand that classification, but I thought we would actually have one company selected. But because this is two different.
Two different types of energy.
See, that's what I'm saying for classification. Because before, we only talked about the electric. But now it was another, that's why I just want to get clarification on when that second piece came in.
As you know, energy prices are pretty volatile and are fluctuating. So we saw an opportunity to realize some additional savings and took advantage of that. We'll also be looking at a power purchase agreement and probably an on-demand ability to save with our energy providers by turning schools off during peak periods, especially during the summer when they're not used.
Okay, thank you. And I think we should also look at, at one point, beginning to own our own down the road. We can create our own company, but that's just something we can talk about.
I'm interested in that and we will.
Any other questions?
Mr., I always want to call you Lewis for some reason, Mr. Bledsoe. Not meaning Mr. Lewis. I just know somebody named Reggie Lewis. You asked what the item number is. We don't have an assigned item number, but it will be added to the agenda. I just wanted the board to be aware of it, be able to vote on it, and then we'll do the cleanup in the background. So we can make the records reflect that there is an added item. Can you add it a number at this point in time?
Because the reason why.
Put it in under my items and let it show us a number.
What's the number, though?
They're gonna add it now and then.
And the reason why I say that, because of the formality, that's why.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, so in light of Madam SBA's proposal to amend the agenda, Ms. Garcia, do you want to withdraw that motion? Okay. So is there a motion then to amend the agenda to add the item as described by Madam SBA?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend it, add this item.
Padilla.
Second.
What about the?
Fonseca.
Okay, so this is a motion to amend the agenda to add the item as described by Madam SBA, moved by Vice Chair Padilla, second by Ms. Fonseca. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, that's an added item to the agenda. Okay, now is there a motion to take all these items as a package?
Motion.
Padilla.
Second.
This is a motion to take all finance and operations items as a package, including the new item added as proposed by Madam SBA, moved by Vice Chair Padilla, second by Ms. Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, we're gonna take them as a package. Is there a motion to vote on the item?
Motion, Fonseca.
Fonseca. Carter. Motion to vote on all finance and operations items. Roll call, Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Yes.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Finance and operations items approved.
Purchasing.
Yeah, that was all items, I'm sorry. Finance, operations, all items under finance, operations, 12.0, including purchasing. Legal, there is a statement of assurance vote. Is there, I don't know if anybody needs Madam SBA to discuss that or if the board is aware.
Last month, I was not at the board meeting. You reviewed the statement of assurance, which is associated with the NJCUS Act process in the off-years. When we do not have a full CUS Act review, we have to sign, both the chief school administrator and the board chair, sign what's known as a statement of assurance. That statement of assurance is then uploaded to the New Jersey Department of Education website and indicates that Newark has completed its SOA. What was missing at last board meeting was a resolution indicating that the board had seen, reviewed, and approved the SOA. So this is the resolution to make that happen. And once that approval is done tonight, we will submit all of the documents and will have met our CUS Act requirements for the 1718 school year.
Can we get a motion?
Motion, Fonseca.
Second.
Garcia. This motion to move by Ms. Fonseca, second by Ms. Garcia, that the board has seen, reviewed, and approved the statement of assurance as articulated by Madam SBA. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That motion carries. SOA is approved. Personnel.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Padilla.
Second.
About second.
Carter.
Carter, thank you.
You know, they both sounded like.
Motion to approve the personnel agenda, moved by Vice Chair Padilla, second by Ms. Carter. Roll call, Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Yes.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Personnel items approved. Program and instruction authorization of field trips.
Can we get a motion?
Motion, Fonseca.
Second.
Second, Garcia.
Motion to approve the program and instruction item authorization field trip, moved by Ms. Fonseca, second by Ms. Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Program instruction item approved.
All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Carter.
Second.
Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, meeting adjourned. Have a good night.
I'll see you next month.
Happy holidays.